California winery.
Do you want to have a bottle?
It is expensive.
No, I didn't.
Before we get started, we have a new Vice Wing Commander at Vance Air Force Base. Colonel Johnson, tell us a little bit about you.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. Jay Johnson, originally from Fremont, California, in the Northern Bay Area. KC-10 pilot by trade. Also spent some time in Air Education Training Command, which is pulling back here. Coming to you from the Pentagon, just working for the Secretary of the Air Force for International Affairs. So any foreign military sales questions, I can answer those for you here. But yeah, happy to be here. Thanks for having us.
You'll be happy to be in Enid, Oklahoma.
Yes, sir. I was not sad to see the Pentagon on the rearview mirror for the second time.
We hear that a lot. Item one, call to work. Five of us are here, Ben and Tammy are not here yet.
I was coming down the steps right now.
Item two, at the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda of January the 15th, 2019.
I did have a question, Bill, but I errant answered it in the other room, so I'm good.
Okay. Very good. Item three, discuss the Vance Joint Land Use Study final report. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor, City Commissioners.
Here we go.
Thanks, Dana. We started a joint land use with these five objectives in place, and we want to make sure that we promote an orderly transition between the land uses that we have surrounding the base and that they are compatible with what the military is using. We want to maintain the operational capabilities of Vance Air Force Base. We want to promote the size and scope of the military training routes to the community, i.e., specifically their airspace. We need to inform local communities of capability recommendations that are designated within the J-LOSE, and I'm going to cover 20 of the key recommendations with you this evening. And then lastly is to protect the public health and safety. We began the process in 2017 by hiring Matrix Design Group. We've worked with them over the last 17 months. They delivered the final report background and the final joint land use report and the executive summary that I gave each of you a copy this evening. Just quickly, it cost us $201,000. It was a 90% grant from the federal government. We, the City of Enid, supplied 10%. The J-LOSE report will be back in front of this body on February 21st for acceptance. It'll also be a public hearing that evening, so encourage everybody to be there. And we have already started the implementation. That began with the technical committee last week. The study area covers six jurisdictions, three of them are counties, three of them are city. The J-LOSE report can be found at these two websites. It's available to everybody. The report identified 102 compatibility issues. And tonight, we're going to talk about the 20 key recommendations that are in front of you in the summary. Starting with safety, the first key issue is we, the city, along with the county, we need to update our land uses recommended by the Air Force. Most of you already know we have an airfields and byron ordinance that I administer on a daily basis. It matches the ACUs that was given to us by the Air Force, and that is how we manage it. We need to take a tighter look at that and make sure some things that may have come up since then that need to be adjusted, and this will accomplish that. Two, we need to review and update the uses in the clear zones. Those are the areas right off the end of the runway, and in this diagram, they are shown in red boxes. And then also, they would, they're recommending that those areas are purchased and then aneasement back to the base for use. So those are three things around safety. The next one is noise. They're recommending that the state building code adopt noise attenuation, be rolled into the building code for when homes are being built. Two, they developed informational brochures regarding noise generated from Vance and Cagleman. There's a request to work with the Union Pacific Railroad to minimize noise during certain times of the day. And then lastly, disclosures of military impact on real estate transactions. This slide covers drones. It includes Vance and Woodring on the screen. The recommendation is that our local law enforcement work with FAA to enforce established rules and regulations for unauthorized drone usage. Something I thought that was interesting in the report, there are 93 registered drones in Enid. Not very many, and there are five in Waukesha. There'll probably be more as time goes on. And then the other one is create a public awareness campaign of the use of drones. And this little area, this is Vance, this area will be like a no drone zone, and there'll be a smaller one around Woodring. But we'll come back to you with an ordinance at some point in the future that'll detail all of that. The next one is vertical obstructions. That primarily is alternative energies in the form of wind turbines and cellular towers. The recommendation is to amend our ordinance and include these imaginary surfaces. I'm not a pilot. There's some in the room, so bear with me, but I'll explain it to most of us that understand football, if you will think of this in terms of a stadium. And this is Vance's runways. It's the playing field. The bleachers, they go out, they get taller. So the further you move away from the base, the taller the obstruction can be, the closer to the base, shorter to none. Is that fairly well for laymen?
Very accurate.
Thank you. So what we're going to do here is address that in our zoning ordinances. We're going to develop a telecommunications ordinance for you to review and adopt, and as part of the approval process, they're asking that the wind energy developers report to FAA when they have structures that are going to be taller than 200 feet.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
Is that part of the ACUs, the ordinance also?
Currently, our ACUs is, I'm going to back up here, looks more like this in noise, and then we have this in our safety. So this will be new, new for us. We need, and this is what they're recommending, that we include this imagery in our ordinance. This will help my office on a day-to-day basis to work with cell tower developers and wind energy. When they're pointing on the map where they're looking to be, we'll be able to identify very quickly the issue that might be around that location.
Is ACUs basically noise?
No, it's more than that.
Height of buildings and things like that?
It's uses within the clear zone, and so let me go back here a little bit. These are good questions. These are the runways. So this red box is a clear zone. Pretty much nothing can happen there in the way of development because there's a higher opportunity or a higher chance of a crash as they are either taking off or landing at the runway. Then when we go out, I don't know if you can see this, it's kind of yellow, that is accident potential zone one. So as the plane is getting, lifting off from the end of the runway, certain things can begin to happen in APZ one. Not very much, nothing in clear zone, a little bit in one, and then as we go out to this yellow here, and you see how this engulfs, this is the meadows, and then you have, this is Oakwood Mall right here, these are APZ two, and that's where we can have a limited amount of development. And that's where our ordinance, we want to be regulating that. We have some non-conforming uses in there because they were already there when this overlays came to us. But in the last 15, 20 years, the city has had its airfield in Byron District and has been very careful in what development it allows, that it's compatible. So the ACUs has the safety zones, it has the noise, and then beyond that, it tells us what we can do in the form of land use, and it talks about training routes and flights and many other things. But we, as a municipality, are mainly focused on those safety zones and noise zones and Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you. So we talked about that. Military training routes. The picture's gotten smaller. Here's Vance, Woodring, here's Cagleman, but here's where our airmen will do their training. And the three objectives here is to track those activities within these classified airspaces. That'll be more Vance than it will be us, the City of Enid. We are to work with FAA to conduct a comprehensive airspace utilization study. That'll probably involve some money, but I'll come back to you in a later date. And then the last one is conduct a study on the impact of reduced military, capacity of military airspace or training. So if we encroach in these areas, then that reduces their capability. And so that's the balancing act that we have to do. If we don't regulate our land uses and uses get built in their areas, then it impacts what they're able to do at Vance. Bash, bird, wildlife, aircraft strike hazards. On this picture, you see Vance and Woodring. Cagleman is a part of this too, it just is not in this graphic. But we need to inform landowners of the impacts of bash, and that's, you know, what we plant, what kind of birds we attract, try to minimize that impact, and then we should get with Vance for their consideration on all projects as it relates to bash. Radar and energy is again, we're, they're asking us in the report to develop an alternative engineering or energy ordinance to limit height within restricted airspace. We need to incorporate in our local planning documents how we do coordinating with DOD, Siding, Clearinghouse, and then map location of wind energy developments. Questions? I know I went over that pretty quick, but that's...
Backing up to just the graphic you just showed there, and what do each one of those colors delineate there?
Good question. Let me get my glasses on. I have that right here. Starting with this purple one right here around Cagleman, that is... The green one is a notification subzone. I got that one. The yellow one is a mitigation subzone, so when you're in here, when you, we have to mitigate, and then...
Meaning exactly what?
Well, if something's in there and creates a problem, then there has to be a strategy to mitigate what problem that creates.
And what sort of things would be talking about?
These would be like vertical obstructions, wind...
Wind turbines.
Wind turbines, cell phones, land uses that attract birds, things of that nature, or buildings.
Up there in northern Grant County, I know there's a lot of, I've seen a lot of turbines up there in northern Grant County.
The purple is a terminal area substation, and I'm, can you tell me what that means?
It says consultative subzone is what it says on there.
Okay. I don't, what does that mean?
So the major concerns for us there, especially when you come back down to Vance, is our terminal area radar, right? So when you, that terminal area radar, a wind turbine, and as big as they are out here, and those things start spinning, it looks like an airplane to us, so I can't see through that. So if you start putting a lot of turbines into those terminal areas that you see there, we can't see the airplanes, so our radar controllers are trying to control those and talk to them. They can't discern between an airplane and the blade of one of those things spinning around. So that, that's where it becomes an issue. So if I understand that diagram correctly, guys, as you get closer into that airfield, it becomes more of a problem, right? As you get further away from the airfield, in general, we are higher, with the exception of the low-level routes that you showed on the other chart over there.
Right.
So I could understand from y'all's perspective, as you get closer in the airfield, it becomes more restricted, more coordination with us would be appreciated so we can help mitigate those, those issues. Because there are things that we can do. There are, we had this problem at Travis Air Force Base in California, and there were some software upgrades that we were able to do to our radar to help us discern between the windmill and the airplane. So there are things that we can, we can do to help mitigate some of that. We just have to know about them.
Got you. Any other questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Item four, discuss the proposed ordinance change addressing communication towers.
That's very interesting. We just talked about, that was one of the things that came out of the study too, was to address telecommunications towers. We started talking about it because it just came up in Board of Adjustment, and Carol's done extensive research, so she's got some potential ordinances here to talk about.
Well, there's two. There's the cell towers, and then there are the small wireless facilities. And the small wireless facilities are tiny little things that you put on a pole, and the State of Oklahoma has basically passed an ordinance that involves the right-of-way except for one thing. Most of these facilities would be put on utility, like utility poles, that are already in our, already in our, in our right-of-way. But it does provide also that we should allow these small wireless facilities that are no greater than 50 feet above ground level to be, to be a matter of right in all but the residential or duplex districts of the city. Height of no greater than 50 feet, I'm, what the technol, this is all because of the 5G stuff, and so the idea is that they have to blanket the city with these little things. But the things can't be more than 28 cubic feet in volume, and the antenna can't be more than 6 cubic feet. So they're really small, so as long as they're not causing problems for Vance, you wouldn't even notice them on a light pole. But this says that we have to provide them as a matter of right in all the zones except for R2, I think, and the duplex zones. So I've got a ordinance that puts this into the, into the code, and will probably consider that at the same time as we consider sidewalks, the MAPC variance, let's see, what else? Sidewalks, MAPC variance, the sign ordinance, and this next one, which is very dense. Okay. When it comes to these cell towers, the 1996 Federal Communications Act, probably, in my opinion, they probably should just have said, cities, don't regulate cell towers, we will regulate it. The FCC will regulate. But instead, they said, no, you can do it, but we are going to judge you if you do it wrong. So they put in all these prohibitions. You can't unreasonably discriminate against a, a cell tower provider. So if you've allowed one cell tower provider to be in a certain place, then you have to let any of them be in a like place. You can't discriminate based on the aesthetic of cell towers in general, but you could consider, so, we don't like cell towers because they're ugly. That will not cut it with the federal court. You have to be able to say, there's something very specific about this area that would make cell towers very, very bad. And one case that actually was, the proof was enough, was a small town that had one giant hill with no trees on it, and at the top of the hill, they wanted to put the cell tower, and the entire town would have to look at the cell tower. Now, this was about 20 years ago. So now, I don't even see cell towers when I'm driving around there. I just, you know, they're not, they're not that unusual anymore. But they did say, well, you know, that particular, you know, they could have put it farther down on the giant hill. So they also indicate that we are supposed to, and if you look at the ordinance, we have in, the location and height has been approved by Vance Air Force Base and Woodring Airport, that they've complied with the Federal Aviation Administration and the Federal Communications Commission, and that there is, if we, if the Board of Adjustment found that the location was not good for a cell tower, and they didn't want to pass it based on regular zoning things like the character of the neighborhood, the zoning, and that kind of thing, then you go to this two-step process where the federal court will ask, did the applicant demonstrate that there was a significant gap in the applicant's service, and was the proposed facility served the least intrusive means necessary to alleviate the gap? Okay. So we got to pass through all those things if we want to deny a cell tower and we want to be able to, our decision be affirmed by the federal court who will be, who might review it.
Carol, what kind of volume request do we get to direct you? Is this something that comes up every week, every month?
No.
A year?
Several times.
We have two.
Two, two in a year.
Yeah.
Two a year? Well, that's not a big...
We've already had two this year so far since January.
Maybe the volume is increasing.
Well, one this year was last year, two came twice.
Mm-hmm.
Same little...
Yeah.
Most of them have been installed, Ms. Girl, over the last 15 years.
That makes sense.
One of the, the controversy on Board of Adjustment that just came was because of degradation because of cellphone usage. There's a lot of cellphone usage, but data usage has drastically increased, and that's what they talked to the Board of Adjustment about and why they need an additional tower. And I believe they had three or four other planned additional towers that they may ask for in the future as well.
We're anticipating the volume going up.
Yes.
Tell me who that is.
Branch Communications is the one that came and asked for the one that was recently approved through Board of Adjustment.
Now, it might be that this 5G, that's a totally different system, and these small ones may take some of the capacity problems away. We done it through the variance process, which has worked very well for 15 years. The problem is, the variance process has, the factors are established by state law and the 10th Circuit, okay, so, they're set out, they've been set out for like 55 years, long before there were cell towers, probably before there were cell phones, these variance factors were there. So we've been trying to, and doing a pretty good job, of factoring in the analysis for cell towers into this variance process. The state law does allow us to craft a special exception, and the special exception is based on our ordinance, so we can factor in the specific things that we need to have to deny or to approve based on this 20 years of case law that's developed since this act has gone into place. And so I put this into a special exception, and it's more tailored to the cell towers. Now, frankly, I haven't had a chance to read through the entire joint land use study, and it may very well be that they have, have specific suggestions that I haven't incorporated in this. So this is what I, what I put together based on lots of case law. There's also a final twist. The United States Supreme Court heard one of these cases in 2015 and determined that you can't have a meeting, have a motion, oh, yes, approve that. You know, like how you guys approved sidewalk variances? And you go, we approve that. And then the minutes, if someone else appealed, you know, and wanted to dispute the sidewalk variance, for example, then, you know, we would just attach the minutes that it have the analysis of why you approved it. Well, the United States Supreme Court has said that is, that is unworkable. You have to have simultaneous written findings that are specific as to evidence at the time you make your determination. So that will probably require going into executive session to deliberate on findings so that then they can make, come out, make a motion, and then have their findings.
So we'd have to provide a written report with our findings on why we voted that way?
Yes.
Carol, I hear a lot about cosmetic issues, but I haven't heard anything about in terms like the effects of EMF or RF.
Oh, okay.
And with a higher concentration, or is there any regulation that dictates, you know, public health studies or anything along those lines to...
Okay, that's a good point. Now, the federal law says that we cannot consider that at all in making our determinations. It is absolutely prohibited, and if we consider it, then that is, you know, we have violated the law, as long as the cell tower meets the FCC rules on that. So that's why we have number 6A, that they have complied with all the rules, regulations, and licensing requirements. As long as they have done that, then we cannot talk about those effects. And if we talk about them, then that would invalidate our findings. So many courts have said. That's why I say, you know, they should just have taken this review away from us, and they do it, because, you know, basically, they've tied our hands. But we do have some wiggle room, and, but, good point, but they've closed that door for us expressly, prohibited. There you have it.
Carol, a question I'll have for you after you've had a time to look at this, based on that vertical obstruction awareness area and the recommendations to look at ordinances, would it be possible to consider defining what that area is, that vertical obstruction area, and just on that basis and based on the study, not allowing objects of a certain height in that area? That'd be something I'd like you to...
Yeah. I need to figure out what that means and try to get it down into, into words. And we might, you know, right now, we have, the location and height has been approved by Vance Air Force Base and Woodring Airport. Now, they could use this, once we've codified this, they could use that to tell us, or if we can figure out what this picture, what these picture mean, means, or how to describe it, we can put that down as an additional factor.
If we knew in advance what was acceptable in Vance or not, if we could restrict it on that basis, it'd be simpler because we would just know, okay, in that area, if you put a pin in the map there, you could only have it 125 feet, or you could only have it 50 feet.
Exactly, exactly.
And we wouldn't even have to ask Vance because Vance would have told us in advance by the...
Based on, on this. I just don't know how to...
And that's interesting.
But we'll get there. I'll, yeah, this is just the summary, and Chris and I will, will get together and figure out how to...
Vance, Colonel, do you have some thoughts on this?
Yeah, I wasn't here for this. Obviously, I've been here all of 11 days, but I would imagine that language would be something like, you know, from the surface of the Vance runway, which is at 1,300 feet, if you go 200 feet per nautical mile outwards from the base, you know, that, that rise over run, as long as that tower does not penetrate that, that surface, you know, it would read something like that. But again, I'd have to use the folks that y'all worked with on the, on the joint use study.
Yeah.
In working with Vance over the years, even though they may be under these heights and loud, the bases made it clear they want to know where they're at because they do pinpoint them.
Yep, absolutely.
So we'll still have to have communication with Vance if we know it's okay with the ordinance. We want to maintain that communication.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
But instead of looking for approval, it'd be a communication thing.
Correct.
Because we'd already have preapproval essentially.
Or at least a criteria to...
At least a criteria that could work.
Yeah, or have...
It's very much like the state legislation on wind towers now, right? Where they're supposed to keep them out of the training routes and the low-level routes.
Yeah. We might want, you know, to keep the location and height being approved, but then also add in this so that we have, you know, kind of built-in redundancy. There might be a circumstance where this shows that it's okay, but because of some other peculiarity, it's not a good location. But we'll, we'll, we'll work on that. But we'll, we'll, we'll work on that, and I'll adjust my special exception, or if they have a better suggestion than special exception, we'll, we'll do that.
So you're working with state and federal at the same time?
Well, right now, no. I mean, I'm just working with the case law, but I will get with Chris, and we will, we will do that before we put it up for public hearing.
Does the FCC have some recent rulings that they've made that pertain to this?
Well, there was an FCC ruling that was, that caused the small facility, the, the one that's 50 feet or under, the tiny little ones that go on poles. Now, that was a recent FCC ruling that came out in September 2018. I don't think that affects Vance at all. I mean, other than the fact that, you know, it might clutter up, I mean, noise or something or spans. In general, the case law I was talking about was not FCC stuff, but it's all of the cases that have gone up to the Supreme Court and to the circuits. That basically, cities keep trying to, you know, this isn't a good location, and then the court says, well, that's not good enough. That's most of the cases. Every once in a while, there'll be a case that they'll say, yes, you did it right.
In other words, they, they want to give the companies as much leeway as possible.
Yes. However, I am confident that if we deny one based on air force criteria, that, that there aren't any cases that talk about air force criteria, but the air force is a federal entity. So I'm sensing if we pinpoint, you know, a federal mission, that that would be different than, sadly, in a way, I, you're very important, but it would also be important, you know, like if every single, you know, resident in the city of Enid can't stand that it's right there, that doesn't seem to hold weight. But I'm confident that the, this will hold weight with the federal government.
We would have the ability to give you a strong justification as to why it's an issue for us. That would be
Yeah.
Very easy for us to do.
Yeah. So I may bring this back, or I might bring a revised and improved.
The second probably is a good idea because you have a vested interest out there. Okay, when do you come back?
This one may not, I think we're planning to go to the MAPC in late-ish February and then March for most of those ordinances. This one may be a little slower because I'm sensing, you know, we've got, I've got to read this, this study, and then I've got to figure out the people that I need to talk to. So those others will go on that. It may be March and April. But hopefully, we can, you know, we've got to put the notices in the newspaper. So, so, you know, there's some downtime for Alyssa to, you know.
Good.
Any other questions, comments? Item five, we are adjourned. We'll meet upstairs at 6:30.
Thank you for watching the Enid City Commission's Study Session. All meetings are broadcast on local cable channel 12 and in high definition on channel 112. In addition, the study session is live streamed on the web at enidtv.org. If you have any questions or comments regarding this broadcast, please visit the city of Enid website at enid.org.